It's a call to order at 6:08 PM. Steve Mascale from Ocean Gate Baptist Church will be leading us with the invocation today. Gentlemen, right up here with the cap, blue and white cap, if you could lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, okay, sir? Thank you.
No, go ahead, Pastor.
Okay, okay, welcome. Welcome. As we get ready to go before the Lord in a word of prayer, in respect and adoration, I would ask that you stand. If you have a condition, you does not have to, but let us do so as unto Him, because He is the one that will pull us through. Amen? It's okay, let us stand. Let us bow our head in a word of prayer. Beloved Father God, we thank you, Lord, for this opportunity, Father God, that you had given us, Lord God, that we thank you, we give you praise, honor, and glory. We thank you, Father God, for looking over us, Lord, and provide us with everything pertaining godliness. We thank you, Father God, for each and every one that are here, the chief of police, and every dignity, and every human being that are here. Lord, we lift them up, Father God, in the mighty name of Jesus, Lord God, for the assignment that you had given them, oh, Father. We pray your protection, and we thank you, Lord God, that what they are doing, Father God, it is your will, for you declare that your will will be done in earth as it is in heaven. So we give you praise. We lift them up, Father God, and support them even as they take this stand, Lord God, to continue, oh, Father God, to walk in this wonderful vision that you had given them. We pray, Lord, your protection for them, Father. We pray for you protecting them coming in and protecting them going out, Lord. We thank you, Father, we lift up their family before you also, Lord. We gave you praise, honor, and glory. And, Lord God, now, I thank you, Father, for the authority, Lord, restored dominion, that you had given unto us, believer, Father. Lord, and right now, Father, I come against the work of the enemy that will try to confuse them, Father, and will try to throw obstacles in their way, and I rebuke and bind that wicked force in the mighty name. I thank you, Lord God, I pray for love, Father God, to continue in the midst, to look after each other, care after each other. We thank you, Lord, I thank you for what they are doing, I pray your blessing, Lord God, that they are making a difference, Lord God, in Hawthorne, California, and not only Hawthorne, California, Lord God, but it go be, it go be a vision, Lord God, that we will catch the vision, not only in Hawthorne, California, but beyond Hawthorne, California. Lord God, we thank you, we praise you, we adore you, Lord, and we thank you again, Father. We give you praise, Lord. We salute what these men and women are doing, Father. We thank you for them. We give you praise, honor, and glory, in the mighty name of Jesus Christ, of Nazareth. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Amen. You may be seated.
No, please stay standing.
Oh, okay.
Young man, if the young man right here could just start off the Pledge of Allegiance towards the flag, right here, go ahead, start it off for us, please. We're waiting for you, sir.
Republic, which stands under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for being here. There's a lot of familiar faces over here, and a lot of familiar faces right up front here, so we welcome you to the City Council. We are gonna have some rules of decorum for today, but we just wanted to do the roll call first, please.
Councilmember Johnson.
Present.
Councilmember Manning.
Here.
Councilmember Reyes English.
She's excused.
Mayor Protem Montero.
Present.
Mayor Vargas.
Here.
All right. So once more, thanks, everybody, for being here. Before we do a couple of the other things, we're gonna have the presentation from Mr. Torado. So the presentation is gonna be on the citywide parking study presentation. How many of people agree that we need to look at the parking in our city? Can you guys raise your hand? Right? Okay, okay, so this is a very important one, so I think it'll benefit everybody who's here to take a look at this. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, City of Hawthorne staff and residents. My name is DJ Torado, and I'm the Associate Traffic Engineer with the Public Works Department, and I'm also here with Laura Fora Nash from Kimbley Horn &amp; Associates, who's assisting us with this project, with this citywide parking study. So I'm gonna briefly introduce the citywide parking study and present a recommendation for a paid parking pilot program for Hawthorne Boulevard and Jack Northrup. So I know a lot of people raised their hands. There is a parking issue in the city. A lot of that is due to the growing demand for on-street parking. On our commercial areas, there's a lot of spaces that face low turnover and use by the employees. Residential neighborhoods is a big issue, because the spaces are congested due to the growing population and multi-generational households. The state laws have not really helped as well, because they have reduced the on-street parking supply and also the off-street parking requirements. So there's AB 413, which is the daylighting crosswalks law that states that you're not allowed to park within 20 feet of any marked or unmarked crosswalk. SB 9, which is the housing density law about building more housing, and AB 2097, which is for transit-accessible housing, so you're not necessarily, there's no more parking requirements, minimum parking requirements, if residential housing is built near transit facilities. So the main project goals and objectives of this parking study is to do an inventory of all of the on-street parking and also of the city-owned off-street parking facilities, to develop regulations such as the time limits, zones, and meter rates, analyze how full parking spaces are at different times in areas identified by council, approve availability in high-demand commercial areas, identify new off-street parking facilities, and evaluate opportunities to generate revenue through parking management enhancements. So this is a map of the City of Hawthorne. We're gonna be studying the entire city. The blue shows the commercial study area, so that's mainly on the main arterial streets such as El Segundo Boulevard, Hawthorne Boulevard, Perry Avenue, Crenshaw Boulevard, and then all of the residential neighborhoods, as you see there. So just a quick history of some of the parking initiatives that the city has done. We have done the residential parking, permit parking program. That was paused back in around 2022, I believe. That was where residents would sign a petition if they wanted to have their street be permit parking only. Currently, we paused that program, but any street that currently is permit parking can still obtain parking permits. Some lessons we learned from this residential permit program is that the small permitted areas led to unintended spillover onto neighborhood blocks. So if one street was permit parking only, if you couldn't park on that permitted street, you would most likely move on to another street that didn't have permitted parking, and so a lot of the problems moved over there. Currently, we have a flat one-time fee, which discouraged the use of private off-street parking. Currently, the fee is $10 for a parking permit, three parking permits per household maximum. And there's a neighborhood-level program, the neighborhood-level programs at a scale are inefficient to address the broader parking challenges. And then currently, we are doing the parking tees, or the parking markings, where every neighborhood is currently being marked different parking spaces, so that residents could park properly, and it's to reduce double parking and saving parking spaces for neighbors or for other residents. So for the parking study, some key implementation factors that we have are enforcement, which is essential to ensuring that the parking rules are followed and that turnover is achieved. Funding from the revenue from parking can offset enforcement costs. And there is a no-one-size-fits-all approach. As you can see, the parking tees aren't necessarily the only solution to the parking issues, so a combination of solutions tailored by neighborhood and commercial areas will be the most effective to alleviate the city's parking concerns. So for this pilot program, we're doing a two-phased approach. So Phase 1 is to evaluate the technology options, which involve enforcement and on-street payments, and to expand the current license plate reader capabilities. And then Phase 2 is to do the pilot program, which is to install pay stations, meters, and also have a parking mobile app for residents and visitors to download and pay for parking. So we are currently proposing this pilot program at certain locations. This includes Jack Northrup Avenue, Hawthorne Boulevard, El Segundo to Rosecrans, the parking lot between 129th and 130th Street west of Hawthorne Boulevard, some spaces at Memorial Center and Jim Thorpe Park. The numbers you see there are all marked parking spaces, except for Jack Northrup Avenue. That's currently just an estimate at this time. But the total number of spaces we are looking at is 1,272. So the goal for this pilot program is to gather data to inform a long-term citywide parking strategy. We wanna test enforcement and technology solutions in a controlled scope, so in a smaller area at first, and then expand citywide, and we wanna begin generating parking revenue for the city. So for the next steps of this program, we wanna do a request for proposal for the pay stations, conduct sit walks, and finalize specifications, upgrade the existing permit and enforcement software, and train enforcement staff. By fall of 2025, we wanna begin equipment installation and do the enforcement rollout, and then by spring 2026, we wanna have a six-month post-pilot evaluation to see where we're at and analyze what strategies have worked so far and what we can do to improve before moving this citywide. And that is it for my presentation. I can take any questions.
Questions for my councilmember colleagues? Sir, go ahead.
Through the chat, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, AJ, for the presentation. Like Mr. Mayor said, you know, we've been trying to solve this parking problem for decades, and we have been unsuccessful. But at least, you know, I love the fact that we're gonna do the study, and also the pilot project for the parking reinforced for mirrors or smartphones, because back in 2019, I tried to bring the smart parking idea, and I was shut down. So I'm glad to see that we go in the right direction to make sure that we create more parking space and availability for our residents, because we know, you know, we have close to 90,000 residents, and average family have four different cars. So definitely, we need to do something about it. So I appreciate the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
We're good?
All right, thank you, AJ. Thank you so much for your effort.
Thank you.
We have some things that are actionable, so we're gonna just start talking amongst the council. Thank you. All right, let's see. Okay, so could you just read the guidelines for oral communications first, and then I'll say something?
Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, all remarks should be addressed to the City Council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communications, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the City Council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the City Manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation.
All right, thank you. So I wanna welcome everybody here who's here. We have a little bit of extra attendance today, so I welcome that, and that's what these City Council meetings are for, an opportunity for people to express their concerns about things that are happening in their community, whatever it might be. Okay, so it could be the parking, it could be maybe, it could be maybe there's some problem with some of the trimmings, the landscaping along your street, the street conditions, and just generally how you feel about something, right? But that being said, there are some rules of decorum, just like we have amongst ourselves. We were pretty clear two or three, four meetings ago amongst ourselves, right? We talked about things, how we wanted to make sure we treated ourselves, because, believe me, sometimes there's differences in opinion up here, but we managed to get some things sorted out, just to be able to have a good dialogue. Because what we want up here as a council is to effect good, positive change. We don't wanna stay stagnant, and if we just keep, you know, just interrupting each other, speaking over each other, and having personal gripes and everything, then we don't progress the city forward, and just kinda, that also pertains to you as residents. So there's the three minutes that individuals get to talk up there. So there's a little light behind me that is gonna indicate when your time's almost up. Today, I know there are people with some signs, but you're free, you're gonna be free to express yourselves, but the signs can't come up, because that's a rule that we have here in the city, and it's established in other cities as well. So make sure you keep those there, and then when, if you feel like you need to express yourself about something, just come up there. There's absolutely no cussing, there's no interrupting anybody over anybody, no clapping, and no, like, shows of expression or support or against. We respect everybody. There might be some people that are against your way of thought, there are some people that agree with me. So on both ends, we just need to respect what people say. So if anybody disrupts or does, fails to follow these things that we've laid out, you'll only get one warning, and then after that, if things continue, we just ask you to go. But you're free to express yourselves, and it makes you, right now, I can tell you this, it makes me really happy that people are here, at the council meeting, expressing themselves, and not out there risking getting hurt and things happening. So thank you so much, guys, okay? So I have some, I have some cards. I'm gonna just start off with the cards I have, and I think there's gonna, and then after that, anybody else who would like to come up after this can come up and do so, okay, guys? Jova Salazar. So you guys are gonna get to hear what kind of things we have to deal with over here, since this is a good experience for you guys. Go ahead, ma'am, senora.
Good evening, everybody. City Council and Mayor. So my name is Jova Salazar. I live here in the City of Hawthorne since probably 2010. So the most recent issue that I see that happens over and over every day that we had to deal with is dog feces all over the place, and the owners are very disrespectful if we bring these issues up to them. I would like to see that they have a way to identify themselves, like, how do we identify them? How can we report them?
Today, I know there are people with some signs, but you're free, you're going to be free to express yourselves, but the signs can't come up because that's a rule that we have here in the city, and it's established in other cities as well. So make sure you keep those there, and then when, if you feel like you need to express yourself about something, just come up there. There's absolutely no cussing. There's no interrupting anybody over anybody, no clapping, and no, like, shows of expression or support or against. We respect everybody. There might be some people that are against your way of thought. There are some people that agree with me. So on both ends, we just need to respect what people say. So if anybody disrupts or does, fails to follow these things that we've laid out, you'll only get one warning. And then after that, if things continue, we just ask you to go. But you're free to express yourselves. And it makes you, right now, I can tell you this, it makes me really happy that people are here at the council meeting, expressing themselves, and not out there risking getting hurt and things happening. So thank you so much, guys. Okay? So I have some, I have some cards. I'm going to just start off with the cards I have, and I think there's going to, and then after that, anybody else who would like to come up after this can come up and do so. Okay, guys? Jova Salazar. So you guys are going to get to hear what kind of things we have to deal with over here. So this is a good experience for you guys. Go ahead, ma'am.
Good evening, everybody, City Council and Mayor. So my name is Jova Salazar. I live here in the city of Hawthorne since probably 2010. So the most recent issue that I see that happens over and over every day that we had to deal with is dog feces all over the place. And the owners are very disrespectful if we bring these issues up to them. I would like to see that they have a way to identify themselves, like, how do we identify them? How can we report them? There's a lot of people coming back and forth. I could take a picture of them, probably, but I don't know who they are. And taking pictures of them makes them very aggressive, and so it is not fair. All you have to do is go around the city of Hawthorne and in the grass and in people's properties, and there's feces all over the place, and this is just not acceptable. Item number two, what are the restrictions for homeowners to replace the grass with soil? Like, my idea is to replace all the green on the ground with soil because I am fed up with these grass issues. And I came to the city hall, and they say there's nothing that restricts it, but I just don't want to be hit with the penalty later on because I didn't do enough research. So I don't know who I should go to or who do I get anything in writing, because it would be a lot of work if the city makes me undo it. And then there's an issue that I presented to the council before, probably last year, on the bicentennial park at 106 Dory Avenue, which is behind the wall where I live. And so they planted a lot of trees on that wall. And so they were overgrown at the time, where there were, like, huge branches overlapping over to the back of the yard where I live. And so I came to City Council, nobody reported, nobody showed up, and I had to do all the work. And then I think I sent an email to the business manager, letting him know that I had done it and that I was charging for it. And I never heard anything back from anyone. And so the branches are going crazy again. I'm just letting you know, this is an issue, like, the trees are being watered. It's, I guess, it's expected that the trees are going to grow, and nobody's, I guess, maintaining them. So they're growing all over the place and all over on the other side of, towards my yard. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. And for Sergeant Arms, give her the information for the 311 app. That'll be a very direct way of getting the message to the right people, okay?
Mr. Mayor, if I can ask, if we can get her contact information to follow up regarding the trees?
Okay, Sergeant Arms, I believe he heard that. Thank you. Pastor Gregory Gwich, please.
Hello. So I've actually come just to invite the city and the staff to our Hawthorne-Londale Ministers' Breakfast on Thursday. So I know a lot of you guys work, and we're really proud of you, but we do have a time where we pray for the city. And we have a meeting afterwards at 8:00, so if you'd like to come, we'd love to have you. If you don't come, we're still going to pray for you. And if you, if there's anyone here that would like to come and be with the ministers at 7:00 in the morning on Thursday or 8:00, just to come and hang with the faith community, we have some flyers here. It's going to be at South Bay Celebration, which is across the street from the Memorial Center. So you're all, like, invited to come. There's going to be some sort of breakfast, too, so I'd like to have you come. God bless you.
Thank you, sir. Pat Donaldson, Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, Mayor Protim and manager, everyone here. Patricia Donaldson, President/CEO of the Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce. I'm going to make a few announcements, and then I'm going to have someone that's new to our chamber come up and tell you about his business that has joined the chamber. Next Thursday, June 19th, excuse me, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM, we're going to have bingo night. It's our mixer at the chamber office. Again, it's 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM, someone's going to win $100, someone will win 50, and someone will win 25. And I just want everyone to know that the money that's given out, like I just said, is, does not come from the chamber. It comes from me personally. So every time we have something and it has to do with money, it's from my pocket. And I don't have a problem with that. July 4th, from July, from June 28th to July 4th, we're going to have our fireworks stand on 120th and Crenshaw. So hopefully, you can tell everyone to come and buy fireworks from us, because the money that we receive from that is going to go for backpacks and goodies inside of that for the Cornbloom Elementary School. August 29th, at 9:00 AM, we'll be giving out the backpacks with everything in it at Cornbloom Elementary. September 29th is our 11th Annual Golf Tournament, and I hope that everyone can be there. And we are sending out invitations to everyone. Now, I would like to have Jose come up here, and he is a chamber member, and tell about his business and what they do.
Can I get the restart?
Yeah, go ahead.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilmen. And good afternoon, everyone present. Thank you for having me speak here today. My name is Jose Pereira, and I'm honored to serve as the branch manager for the new Wafit Bank here in the city of El Segundo. A little bit about me is that I spent my last 15 years in the community banking, most of them here in the South Bay, specifically here in Hawthorne. What really fills my passion is building genuine relationships and helping people and their businesses strive financially. It's not just about banking, it's just about being a partner for our community that you could count on. At Wafit, we're a regional bank with a deep local roots with over 100 years in business experience, but have only been here in California for the last year. We offer stability for strong institutions and personalized service. For community banking, we provide full-service business banking as a new commercial banking establishment in California. What really truly sets us apart is our community commitment. We're not just about opening accounts, we're here to support families, empower entrepreneurs, and it's used as a resource for long-term growth, and we believe in doing things the right way, with integrity, transparency, and with heart. And speaking of community, we're excited to officially open our doors and celebrate a Wafit's grand opening on Wednesday, July 30th. We'll be hosting an open house from 9:00 AM to 4:30, so feel free to stop by.
You can keep it going. You're second person. That's fine. A couple more minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. So feel free to stop by, meet the team, our branch, and enjoy some light refreshments. Then from 4:30 PM to 7:00 PM, we'll be holding our ribbon-cutting ceremony and community mixer. And I would love to have all of you there. It's going to be a great evening of networking, connecting with the local leaders, and celebrating what we have hoped for and establishing long-lasting partnerships with the community. If there's, if there's ever anything that I could do for anyone in here, feel free to reach out to me, whether it's related to banking or just connecting with you and connecting you with the right people, please don't hesitate to reach out. Thank you again, and welcoming Wafit Bank, and look forward to seeing many of you in a grand opening. Thank you.
Good. All right, thank you. So that was, that was all I had. I do have a group of cards here. It's a huh? The what? Yeah, but I'm going to Well, you know what? I usually don't do this, but I'm going to take the podium oral communications on my part, a message that I want for my city council member colleagues and my community, so I'm just going to just, just I just want to address my fellow colleagues, just from the podium, because this is something that I feel impacts me personally as your leader. And it's just made a big impact on Sunday, actually. How many people here like to eat menudo? I like, I think a lot of people like to eat menudo. I went shopping for records. I love to collect records, and on Sunday, I just thought it was going to be just a regular day for me. I went to the record shop down in, up in, where was it? Over here on Adams Boulevard, and I made my way home. And I'm coming down on Hawthorne Boulevard. I say, hey, I got to get to church. I better go to my mom's house and get some menudo. So I was driving down south on Hawthorne Boulevard. And then I'm like, what the heck am I seeing? La Migra's in Hawthorne. They're driving the opposite way. You know, ice, and I'm like, what? Okay, maybe there's this driving through. And then, so I turned left from Hawthorne Boulevard down on 120th and to my parents' house that live a little bit further down. And so all of a sudden, I mean, you guys didn't see it yourselves. I saw it. I was right there. I couldn't get through. And I saw all the action taking place and how it happened. And of course, it's painful. I just couldn't move. I just, I was just, couldn't move my car. Somehow, I managed to go and, you know, of course, I observed everything. So that being said, it hit home. It happened here in Hawthorne. And I understand all the, you know, the emotions that are coming from within for members of our community. But I just wanted to see if I could get the bind from my council member colleagues, if we could put out a statement on behalf of the city. Of course, individual statements from you guys would be separate. So of course, there's much more, many more feelings that I have about it. But our priority is to keep the community safe and to make sure that you guys don't get hurt. Okay? And we stand together here for all of Hawthorne's residents, all, all of Hawthorne's residents, okay? That being said, the statement I propose to my council member colleagues is the following. The City of Hawthorne Statement Regarding the Ice Raids. The Hawthorne City Council is aware of the recent ice raids in our community. We understand the fear and anxiety these events can cause many of our residents and their families. We want you to know that the City of Hawthorne stands with you during these unsettling times. We believe in the dignity and humanity of every resident, regardless of immigration status. Our city is committed to ensuring all community members feel safe and supported. We know these raids can create confusion, stress, and uncertainty for families, and we want to assure you that you are not alone. The City of Hawthorne is actively working to connect residents with trusted resources, including legal aid and community organizations, to help them navigate these challenges. We encourage anyone needing assistance or concerns to visit our Resident Resources page on our website. There, you will find valuable information and links to services that can help support you and your loved ones. Together, we are stronger, and we stand united in our commitment to protecting and caring for all of our residents. Please remember that you and your families are valued members of this community, and we will continue to advocate for your safety and well-being. So if I could have a concurrence for my city council members for that statement? Thank you, guys. Okay, so I do have, I do have cards. I'm going to start off with four cards that I have. There's going to be a Valerie Mueller, an Ayesha Sosa, Rob Williams, and a Laverne Thomas. If you guys could line up over here? I don't know if, I think there might be one that might have been not related to the topic at hand. But what your name is?
Hi, I'm Valerie Mueller.
Okay, ma'am, go ahead.
I had a whole speech prepared, and you took the wind out of my sails because I was asking if there was an official city statement regarding those raids. So I don't need to say that anymore, but I had an additional suggestion. If you could maybe make posters for businesses to hang out, or flyers to, so that residents and visitors and workers can learn about their rights, that they don't have to open their doors or speak to anybody or let anybody into their homes without a warrant, et cetera. There's already, like, cards available for that. So I was wondering if the city could do that as well. Thank you.
For the feedback, and one last thing that I forgot to mention is that we can't respond to the comments or communications. It's just a one-way directional thing, but we're right. Your name is?
Laverne Thomas.
Laverne Thomas, go ahead.
Yes. Hi, I wanted to address the council about harassment, police harassment. Now, I know that it's a lot going on in the city regarding, like, what you were saying with the raids, but as a citizen here and of Hawthorne, my children are being harassed by the police. On May 30th, at 1:29 in the morning, my daughter called me and said that her brother was being arrested. And by the time I got, where they were, they were down the street from, they were down the street from our house. And when I got there, the police had my son in a car. My daughter was being, what do you call it? Searched by two male officers. You know, she'd never been in trouble before in her life. She'd never been in a police car, any of that. And they were sitting in the parking lot. So I was asking the police, there was about five or six police cars there. And I'm asking them, why do you guys have my children? They couldn't tell me the reason why they were arresting them. They was just, you know, giving me nothing. But they took my son, but my daughter, they, you know, they let her go. But my problem is if something's going to happen, you know, something may happen. You know, they had guns pulled on my son, you know? And something needs to be done.
Ma'am, if you could talk to our Sergeant in Arms?
I'm sorry?
Our Sergeant in Arms is in the back, and he could get your information and possibly communicate, and communicate you with
Well, it seemed like, I guess I need to speak, make an appointment to speak with you. I don't really like speaking in public or whatever. That's not my thing. I get nervous and forget about what I'm talking about, but I don't like it. It's harassment, and I don't even see why they would have
Which is why we're, I'm asking you to talk to our captain or Sergeant in Arms, because they know that we want you to talk to them and figure things out, okay? They're right in the back waiting for you. Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Rob Williams?
Yes.
Go ahead. Hi, sir.
Hello. Good evening. Rob Williams, 32-year resident of Hawthorne. Got my statement down here, so I get a little nervous at times. I'm off the cuff, so I'm on script today. All right. So back during the Second, the Second World War, our federal government rounded up Japanese immigrants and placed them in internment camps. Camps that were poor living conditions and a lack of basic amenities. It was wrong. Several years later, the junior senator from Wisconsin named Joseph McCarthy went after those that had a left-wing viewpoint, and that was called the Red Scare. It was wrong. Now we find ourselves with a president consumed with vengeance, hatred for immigrants. He sent these, excuse me, ice holes to our community to round up, in his words, hardcore criminals. That is a lie. They are randomly grabbing anyone who is brown out of Home Depots, North Gate Markets, and other places because they have a quota to fill set by a racist in the White House named Stephen Miller. 3,000 arrests per day. As a community of good neighbors, we need to protect our own from this tyranny. Immigrants are hardworking people. They pay taxes, unlike rich CEOs and Donald Trump. We should in no way assist ICE and Homeland Security and their thirst of roundups that are unconstitutional, and these people are denied due process. I want to quote the Fifth Amendment. No person, no, it doesn't say citizen, no person shall be held to answer for a capital or otherwise infamous crime unless on a presentment of or indictment of a grand jury, except in cases arising in the land or naval forces or militia with an actual service in time of war or public danger. Nor shall any person be subject for the same offense to be twice, but in jeopardy of life or limb. Nor shall we, nor shall be compelled in any criminal case to be a witness against himself, nor be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law. Nor shall private property be taken for public use without just compensation. This is in our Constitution. Everyone should have one of these with them at all times during these times. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ayesha Sosa, that's you, miss?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to say, as a Hawthorne resident my entire life, I was born and raised here in Hawthorne, not too far from this establishment, sorry. I've always been proud of the community that I grew up around, most of which consisted of immigrants from all over the world who contribute with their hard work and dedication. Considering the events happening as of right now involving our entire community and the community of Los Angeles as whole, I consider this an infringement on our rights by the government. And I'd just like to say that as someone who voted this past election, we chose our we chose our representatives to protect us and to ensure that our community is safe. I, we sit and stand here today in full support of our rights and considering that our community is made up of immigrants who have built this place, I would like to say that I hope the council here is aware that they can do stuff to protect us. It's immensely important. People are being ripped out of their homes, chased out of bus stops and stopped, completely seized, and unable to represent themselves. People are not aware of the rights. We have many rights. I hope you will continue to protect and allow us to protect our amendments, our rights, and our community as most of us consist of immigrants and a lot of us have immigrant households. Offering help and ensuring that information is being displayed, I think, are important ways that we can spread awareness in our community. And I hope as a future journalist student, I can be proud of where I grew up and where I'm from, where I was born. And hopefully, in the future, I can write about how Hawthorne protected its citizens and be proud of it and where I came from. Thank you.
Miss? So right now is the point where anybody who did not fill out a form can form a line and address the city council. Everyone's free to do so. Go ahead, sir. Hi.
Good evening, city council. So my name is Manuela Paricio. I am a longtime Hawthorne resident, Hawthorne High School graduate. I left in 2005 to the United States Marine Corps where I served honorably. I served in Iraq in 2008. And I did all that in hopes that our communities will never have to live in fear. Yet, here we are, right? To add to the gentleman, a couple persons behind me. There was a 1954 Operation Wedback. So this has happened before. This is not anything new. Where you were mayor, I was actually there as well. And I was, I was there trying to stand up for a pregnant lady that was being pinned down by three ICE agents on 120th and Hawthorne Boulevard. Which, by the way, was a US citizen and she was later, you know, let go. So what I'm gracefully but still sternly demanding is for, from this body to keep us safe. We voted you in for a reason. These are tough times. The residents of Hawthorne are scared, right? And I have a couple, a couple ideas that I'd like to develop if possible. Mayor, you already talked about making a public statement, which would be great. I think that would bring a lot of calm. Offering legal, legal aid space, using libraries and Hawthorne buildings to offer these families some, some information, some knowledge, so they can be a little calmer. Ban ICE from city property without a warrant. I think that's important because it will, it would also restore faith in this, in this council, in the city, in this police department. So that, you know, other crime is gonna go unchecked if residents are scared of the city, you know, the city itself. Lastly, I would, I would demand transparency. We want a monthly report. Has ICE requested help? Has police assisted? Have city resources been used in any way? We don't want any shadows. We want to be transparent. We trust you, right? But it is a key time for our residents. Again, I thank the body and I hope you do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for being here. Sir?
Hi, good evening. Ruben with North Hawthorne Community Association. I wanted to talk about an observation that was taking place in the last council meeting. I give kudos to Mr. Montero when he was talking about bringing Cape Verde to the city and talking about, you see, that's the kind of mindset that we, that the council needs right now, that we need to start building. Because you know, we're going into the Olympics, we have to build some more businesses and so on. When he mentioned bringing Portugal, you're talking about Cristiano Ronaldo, and that's bigger right there, so. This is the kind of mindset that the residents want from their council. Because this is, this is what, at the end of, I believe at the end of each meeting in the past few years, you guys talk about events and so on. I, I think that the issue should be closed down like the way Mr. Montero did. Given an initiative and a goal and something that it's looking forward to. Instead of just reciting events from a Parks and Rec magazine like Mrs. English does all the time. It's ridiculous. We need to start focusing on goals. We need to be goal-driven. This is, this is how you build a city. We have to focus on reality, which is building the city. Because as all, as everyone knows, the Hawthorne Mall was closed back in, it started from 92 because of the protests and the riots, you know? And now look at the Hawthorne Mall, died off. So this is what we need to start thinking about, businesses and support our police department 110%. You guys are being tested and our police department has always been there for you. Now it's time for you guys to be there for them as well, as we are in North Hawthorne, okay? Have a good night. God bless.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Hansel Cisneros. Five years ago, 2020, I had a team of kids my age that we organized. So I am familiar with Mr. Alex Vargas. I'm not sure if you remember. I'm also familiar with Mr. Alex Montero. It's nice seeing you guys. Not familiar with everybody else. I hope to be, become a lot more familiar, especially during these times. I'm now 26 years old. I moved here 12 years ago. I was lucky enough to be able to move to this country legally. So, you know, I know a lot of hard-working friends of my, you know, I have tons of friends who are immigrants and their parents are immigrants. Some of their parents are undocumented and these are people who have done nothing but move here, work hard, like a lot of our family members. I'm sure we can relate. They worked hard, did nothing but pay taxes, work hard, send their kids off to college. And now those people are at risk. These people are now afraid of going to work and, you know, surviving. And I'm not sure, this was past Sunday, a couple people before me spoke about it. I'm not, I wasn't okay at all when I saw, you know, the lady and the gentleman on Sunday evening getting stopped, harassed, detained in Hawthorne. You know, I know you guys are not superheroes. You guys cannot be there and stop it right there and then. But I was reading an article recently about Burbank or Glendale, forgive me, I can't remember exactly which city. Granted, I know those cities are bigger. But they just announced that they won't, you know, it won't, it won't be, ICE won't be welcome in that city. And I'm not sure if we have the power to do so, but certainly we definitely need to like do something about that. I'm not sure why they're, I went to high school in Delayer, you know? And me being, going walking to high school every day, I probably would have been detained. And I don't know what we're doing with allowing them to be in, you know, Delayer random parks in the city. I think they should only be allowed if they have a warrant, which they haven't been showing any. So I'm really concerned and I feel awful because the lady a few minutes ago went on, Hawthorne is a city of immigrants, you know, of everybody, very diverse city. And I already went to war with you guys five years ago regarding police harassment and budgets and allocating money to the community, a little more money. Thankfully, we got that win, so I'll make notes for that. But hopefully, moving forward, we, I don't, I don't have to worry about any of my friends and their parents walking around 120th and Hawthorne Boulevard, possibly being detained by these racist practices. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, sir, and it's good seeing you and I hope you're doing well. Next, please.
Good evening to mayor and to all the city council, Pastor Gar. First of all, my heart goes out to the atrocities and the unfortunate raids that our people have experienced, which caused them to walk and to live in fear. Having said that, I want to applaud the City of Hawthorne for the support that you've provided us as we speak out against gang violence through the theater of arts. I want to personally thank the business community. I want to personally thank the council. I want to personally thank the Chamber of Commerce and Pastor Greg for the support as we're preparing our play on June 21st at Glory Christian Fellowship International, where you will see the product that we've put together, where we speak out against gang violence and the atrocities that are bringing forth today. And so on behalf of that, I want to personally invite you, Mr. Mayor, and to all the city council members that come out and experience this product that I believe will help you to hear the voice of the community, help you to hear the voice of the people, help you to hear the sentiment of those that are crying out in the wilderness. And so that we can come together and put together some programs and we can come together and raise some funding that will change the landscape of what we're dealing with, that will help us to eradicate some of these violent situations and circumstances. And we can make the City of Hawthorne a city that we all can be proud of and a city that we all can live in comfortably without having to walk out in fear and having to walk out wondering if we're going to make it back home. So again, our play is on June 21st at Glory Christian Fellowship International. It's at 5:30. I have tickets for all of you to come. I hope to see all of your bright shining faces. But I do want to personally thank you for all the support that you've given our production to help us to bring this to the forefront. May God bless you and may heaven smile upon you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Okay, good evening. Name is Ryan Richard, 33-year resident of the City of Hawthorne. And I came here, not to kind of harp on things, but the first thing I wanted to come up here and do was to say thank you. And I would thank you to the residents who've come in here and spoke. I'd say thank you to the people who've come out here and protested. But the people who've come here and actually been very respectful with the way in which they've done the things that they're supposed to do. I appreciate that because as a city of good neighbors, that's a thing that we should do. They've done their part and now it's time for our council to do their part. They've been good neighbors. They've come in here and they've delivered this message in a stern, but respectful manner. So it's time for our council to be good neighbors to these folks, to do what they can do to protect the people who are here in this community. As the people who are charged with following the laws or setting the laws in our city, all I'm asking for you to do is pay attention to what those laws are. People who are being picked up off the street are being picked up and not given due process. Something that's 100% against our Constitution. So as folks who are charged, charged with protecting the city, at least just go, we can go along with that part. You don't have to agree with everything that's happening, but what's happening is unconstitutional and thus you should not be people who are supporting that. Point blank, period. It's really that cut, cut dry and easy. I again just want to continue to say, appreciate all the folks who stood, who got up here and spoke. It's not easy to do, especially when we have spaces where people are taking pictures of you, feel like you may be unsafe. So again, I want to say we stand with you guys. We appreciate everything that you did here. And I'm hoping that after today, our council will do the same thing for us. And thank you for your time.
Hello, everyone. My name is Dr. Bernadette Pinata. I grew up in Hawthorne. I was born in Hawthorne, graduated from Hawthorne High School. And when I went to Michigan for my doctorate, I just couldn't wait to get back. I'm so proud of our community. I'm so proud of the young people who are organizing to keep our community safe in a way that I wish our council members would do. To have people being like, hey, ICE is on here, watch out. And then have everybody spread it to make sure everyone is safe is amazing. And so we do, yes, I think these avenues are important, but we also need people in the streets. And so I think it's important that we also, again, like the gentleman before me said, thank the folks who are on the street protesting and advocating for our rights. I'm horrified by the videos that I've seen. To the young woman, pregnant woman who was taken, the person who had her had a Punisher logo. It is frightening, the fascists who are on our streets taking us. They are masked. We don't know who these people are. They are also folks who are buying ICE gear, who have nothing to do with ICE and also kidnapping folks off the street. It is terrifying and I really hope that y'all can do something. And I would like to know if there is, how can we as citizens know the contracts that our community has and that the city has with businesses, ICE and other places, and where we could find that information? Because the next step should be to divest from those places because they are harming our community.
Thank you, ma'am.
Evening, mayor, city council. I want to give kudos to the chief tonight. We had a memorial on Thursday and I called dispatch and it was properly addressed. I, I, we had a, at our church, we had a funeral and the family was worrying about, well, if the hearse gets there, will they be towed at 3:30? So what I did is I took it in my own hands and called dispatch and let them know that we had a funeral taking care, going on between 3:30 on that the hearse and the family would be parked behind it. And so I told the dispatch, dispatch says, okay, I'll take, deal with it. They called, they let the watch commander know. And five minutes after I talked to her, the watch commander confirmed and said, don't worry about it. It's taken care of. We will, if there was a problem with parking enforcement, told them to call the watch commander. And we've had no issues with the family losing their cars Thursday night. And I'd like to thank the chief and the watch commanders for all their, their help that night. Went off with a kick, it didn't, there was no cars that was towed or the hearse towed. So everything went smoothly. And thank you, chief, and everybody that, and the officers that were there to help out. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I think we have one more person or just two more? Okay, hello?
Hi, I want to say thank you first for the statement. But I also do want to pressure you guys a little bit because we're at a turning point in time where stuff is gonna possibly keep going left. So I want to ask y'all to please like think of anything you could do like to make it absolutely clear that this will not be tolerated here. I don't know if you could do ordinances or something just to make it clear that there's gonna be pushback against the executive branch. Especially because you guys have this power, right, that you chose as elected officials. So I just wanted to apply a little bit of pressure and ask you guys to do as much possible as you can. Like I said, appreciate the statement, but I just really want you guys to push back against this administration. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, for being here. Miss?
Hello, my name is Ruby Cohenz. I'm also a commissioner here in the city. But today I come as a resident, as a community organizer. Everything that has been said, has been said. I want to say thank you to the mayor for his statement. It's greatly appreciated.
All of us.
And also the council. I'm just here to also let you guys know that some of the community members, where I live and some around, they are in fear. They're also in fear of even coming to the council today. And that's the way, that's the reason why I'm here today because I felt it was important for me to be here. I even canceled a flight today to deal with some situations because I thought it was important for you guys to know that something needs to be done. My community is wondering, where is the council? They hear a complete silence from you guys. So hopefully today, that'll change. And again, greatly appreciated. Hope, you know, you get out there and just communicate to the residents. Greatly appreciated.
Thank you, ma'am. So, there we go, Mr. Councilmember, mayor protest.
Hello, good evening. My name is Alexander Montero. You know, I'm an immigrant, right? So I have to speak about this. But I do support the mayor and our council member to do that statement because it's important for us to stand up and speak up, right? Because they said, if you're silent, nothing will happen. And that's what happened when the Nazis was coming up, right? Everybody was silenced and then what happened? Thousands of Jews died. So I stand in support of community across California, including Hawthorne, Lenox, Los Angeles, Huntington Park, Pico Rivera, Paramount, Bakersville, San Diego, and others, that I experience the impact of recent federal immigration enforcement's action. These actions have caused fear, frustration, and uncertainty among residents. I also support the constitutional rights of residents to express their concerns over the action through peaceful protest. Violence and property destruction are not the solution. As an immigrant myself and proud US citizen, I recognize and appreciate the work that our Hawthorne PD and other line-force entity do every day to maintain public safety, public trust, and protect the well-being of all other communities. It is because of their effort that our citizens and our local government remain most trustful level of government among the American people. Again, the local government. Because we are the local government and we need to protect our residents and the Constitution, especially what's happened with the governor and our president. We understand that the recent event is threatening the trust and make our work even more challenging. Because sometimes, you know, we need to figure it out, the consequence. These efforts also highlight a longstanding that our nation immigration system- These efforts also highlight a longstanding that our nation immigration system, which is a federal responsibility, is deeply broken. We need to demand and call the Congress to enact reasonable immigration reforms, reforms that are thoughtful and sensitive, solutions that reflects the reality that faced by millions of families, students, workers in California and all across this nation. So we need to have a strong voice. And I'll ask you, if you protest, be peaceful because you know we don't want chaos in our city. And please protect all of us, and God bless you and good night.
Thank you, sir. Absolutely.
I think I did. Glasses. Are they right there? Thank you. Sorry about that.
My name is Katrina Manning, councilwoman, and I've been watching what's been going on, and it's been very, very disturbing. And to think about a woman who is eight months pregnant and being strapped down and then until later to find out that she was a citizen. The visual of that as a mother, the pain to think about potentially your unborn child could be hurt is not okay. You guys elected me, and I'm here to serve you. I believe that if we come together and we stand up, we have to fight together against what's going on. We have to work together to make a difference in our community. Like they said, my colleague said, silence don't help us, but talking to people does. We have our friends. We have our assemblywoman who is in Sacramento fighting for us. We have our governor. If you've all had an opportunity to watch the news, you will see that the governor is not backing down. The governor is on our side. We have people fighting for us, but we gotta get together and go and make a difference, right? Peaceful, 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 peaceful is so important. I know that emotions in this room is real. I feel it. I feel the tension, the pain and the fear in this room. I feel it outside the room. Every single day, there's something different, something that we're in fear and we have to worry about. That is no way to live. That is no way to live, right? But the only way we'll be able to push through is to work together and stand up together. So when we say, let's go to Sacramento and talk to our governor, talk to our assembly person, that means you guys gotta show up. You understand what I'm saying? We all have to show up for each other, and I am there for you, whether we organize here in the city of Hawthorne by making sure that we spread the word, that we look out for each other, that we protect each other. And we have the finest police department in the South Bay. The finest. When I say the finest, the finest. And they're gonna do whatever they need to do to make sure that they're, that they're protecting us based on the laws, right? Because they have to listen and abide by the laws too. We all work together. We're all a family, right? And because we're all a family, we're gonna all stick together, and we're gonna get through this, right? If we need to come together to heal, to support each other, that's what we need to do. And let me tell you, the children here, they're asking these tough questions. What's going on? They're living in fear. As a parent, that's not something you want to have to explain to your child, right? That's not something as a parent I would want to have to explain to my child. For my child to live in fear, this is not something that I want our community to do. So I want our community to stand together. One of the things that I will ask is that we put resources on the website and that we make sure resources is available. I will be reaching out to our assembly people, our supervisor, all of our friends outside and accent. What are some of the things that we could do to protect our community, but also to provide resources and make sure you guys know your rights? Most important, what we want to do, know our rights. We gotta stick together. So if you guys are with me, say yes, we gonna stick together. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, go ahead, ma'am. I'm the city clerk.
I'm the city clerk, but I'm also a resident. So I want to start right there and say that every single person in this room is an immigrant in some way, shape, or form. This, this country was not ours, so we can't, I think it's, it's rather horrible to have what's going on now happen. It's very painful for, for me to see, and I'm sure everybody here. I was very moved by what the mayor said today. It's just disheartening to see it. We all saw it on television, or we saw it on TikTok or social media where, you know, the pregnant woman was, you know, just manhandled, if you will. I want to also let you know that I've ordered some know your right cards, so I'll have those in the clerk's office. I'll probably stack them up and put them out so that people can come and pick them up. And I also want to let you all know that I am a notary. So if anyone needs help with their, with their immigration papers, I am authorized to help with those, not help giving you advice, but helping to fill it out and also helping you by notarizing it, acknowledging your signature. And to the residents, si tiene ayudar con sus papeles de inmigraciones, llama la oficina de la secretaria, and that number is 310-349-2915. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Is anybody else? Are we good for that? Ma'am, absolutely. Yeah. This is the opportunity for you, okay?
Sorry for the late comment. Everything that I wanted to say was basically already stated, but I just wanted to kind of bring some humanity to the undocumented people. I understand that a lot of us have the privilege of having citizenship, but during the first Trump presidency, I was working at a retail store, and I dealt with a lot of anti-immigrant, anti-black, anti-everything comments as a cashier. And now that I'm in my career, it's very disheartening seeing patients not wanting to come in for their appointments, canceling their appointments. It was basically empty in the clinic that I worked at on Monday. It was jarring to come home on my commute and have zero traffic. And I would just like some transparency from the city regarding the policy on if the police department will cooperate with ICE. And I think maybe as an idea, formally declaring Hawthorne a sanctuary city, I understand the state already has a law, but doing that for Hawthorne to strengthen that policy is an idea that I think could be thought about. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, for being here. So one thing that I forgot to mention is my family's immigrants too. In the 30s, my grandfather on my mother's side came over here because, late 30s, early 40s, there was all the American boys were out there fighting the World War II. And so they had a program where they would get people from Mexico to come and work the fields in the Central Valley and in Napa and all the, all the fields. And so my, my grandfather was a bracero, okay? And so he went through that program, wanted to bring my, you know, my family over, and he opted to go back to Mexico, whether it was of his free will or not. You guys know the history back then and how everything worked, you know? Sometimes, yeah, we don't need anymore, go back. So it's, you know, there's just a lot of different things happening back then. And then my dad's side, in the early 40s, my dad's father came, and they actually lived around the corner from Placito Alvera, and they lived there from the early 40s into the early 50s. So our immigrant experience is alive and well, and we all know that. We all have somebody that we know, either within our families, or somebody down the street, or somebody we often know that might not have that legal status that everybody covet sometimes, right? So we all know that it's impacting us, and so it hits everybody in a different way. But at the same time, everybody's kind of going through painful, painful experience. So, and that's why when I saw what I saw, trying to go to my parents' house to just eat a bowl of menudo, it just kind of, it was just a very uncomfortable thing to see and, you know, and it hurt. It hurt. It just, last couple, two, three days, it's just, I'll be honest with you, I just, you know, haven't felt as happy as I usually am. But that's why we're here, and I really value all my colleagues, the community members and the young, the, the young ones. You guys are young compared to me, so you're still young, right? The youth in our community expressing themselves and just being here and being safe here, expressing yourselves and, you know, just coming together as community. But as part of that, I'm going to ask Pastor Witch, if you could please come up here. He's a close friend of mine, and he has three minutes to, if maybe he could lead us in prayer, kind of try to get some sense out of it, and he's usually somebody who can...
Okay, if you would, bow your heads. Father in heaven, these are troubling times in our area. There are a lot of things happening that, to be honest, no one has every, every bit of information necessary to make really good decisions. Some of it's being hyped, some of it's being downplayed. So we're not really sure, God. I think that the city council has some good ideas about keeping calm and taking this legally and working within the system, whichever side you're on. So Father, I want to take a moment and just ask for a blessing on the kids that came today and everyone who has their, their hearts in this place, with their families and their friends and, and in this neighborhood. And I just ask God that, that really good things would come from this. Not sure how exactly, but you're a good father, and in these areas that we don't really know or understand, you don't ask us to know or understand everything, but you do ask us to trust you. So we want to take this moment and as a group of people, just trust you in this and do what we have to do and take our steps, but trust you that things will work out well because you're a good father. And we have a country that's, that's built on laws and, and blessings and family and relationships and churches and civil government, God. We have a good society. So I pray, Father, you just help us to get through this and to have wiser heads at the end. And whatever comes out of our local problems in Los Angeles or some other parts of the city, Father, we just pray that it would calm, there'd be calmness there and rational, rational heads and those people who on either side want to agitate and spark things up, we pray there'd be peace, Lord God. Because that's, that's really what our, our blessing is here, that we have, we're a nation of peace. So help us to work these things out, Father, and bless everyone here. Thank you for their, their passion, and thank you for their thinking and their, their heart. And thank you for just being a good dad to all of us. We look forward to seeing some good things come out of all of this in the end. So I thank you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Oral communication is closed, so ordered. So we'll, we'll go about the city's business right here. So oral communications, city clerks consent. Thank you guys all for being, you guys can stay for the rest of the meeting, absolutely, okay? Just kind of hear how city government works and some of the things we need to do, okay? Be safe.
Mr. Mayor, I have five items on the consent calendar. They're items two through six for your consideration and approval. Item two, approval of city council meeting minutes for the regular meetings of February 11, 2025, February 25th, 2025, and the special meeting of February 25th, 2025. Item three, city treasurer requests approval of the warrants. Item four, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances on Tuesday, June 10th, 2025's agenda. Item five, resolution number 8534, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, approving the annual engineer's report declaring its intention to levy street lighting assessments for fiscal year 2025, 2026, and setting June 24th, 2025, 6:00 PM as the time and date of a public hearing. Item six, resolution number 8535, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, authorizing and approving a fifth amendment to the tow and storage fee schedule of the non-exclusive towing and storage contract with US Tow for adoption.
I move. Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Okay. Items, public hearings?
Item seven, now is the time and place for a public hearing pursuant to section 8.14.130 of the Hawthorne Municipal Code regarding the weed abatement and cleaning charges, cleaning charges or tax assessed against Union Pacific Railroad Company located at 610 South Main Street, Los Angeles, California, 90014, for the cost of abatement at 2,000 block of railroad in the city of Hawthorne. Regimen motion, staff recommends that the city council conduct the public hearing and make the following determination. The, the attached assessed total of $60,070 is correct or needs to be modified. Authorize a lien in the said amount against Union Pacific Railroad Company. The attached 2025 weed abatement report marked Exhibit A is hereby confirmed and approved, and that the county tax collectors is hereby authorized to collect the amount of assessments as the same appear on the attached roll. No written communications were received.
Is there anyone who would like to provide comment on this here? If there's no further comments, I'll declare the hearing closed, ordered. Is there a motion to accept? Is there a motion?
There is a motion, right? Yes. The council needs to vote on this, specifically those three items that was recommended in the motion. That's first, the attached assessed total charge of $60,070 is correct or needs to be modified, that authorize a lien on the said amount against Union Pacific Railroad Company, and the attached 2025 weed abatement report marked as Exhibit A is confirmed and approved, and that the county tax collector is hereby authorized to collect the amount of assessments as to the same appear on the attached roll. And that's what we're voting on.
I'm moving all three.
Okay. Second. Please vote.
The votes are in. Voter reflects mayor and council voting yes.
The city manager's consent calendar.
Item eight, Euclid Park and Ramona Park Improvement, City Project 24-07 out to bid. Item nine, agreement with the city of Gardena for paratransit services. Item 10, progress payment number four in the amount of $367,520 and 1 cent due to PCN3 Inc. of Los Alameda, California for City of Hawthorne New Senior Center, project number 24-03. Item 11, progress payment number 11 and final acceptance in the amount of $86,908.66 due to Doja Incorporated of Ontario, California for the Zella Davis Park renovation, project number 24-04. Item 12, agreement and purchase order between the city of Hawthorne and Verizon Communications, DBA Verizon Connect Fleet USA LLC for a fleet camera system. Item 13, Harrison Associates Professional Services Agreement for the Housing Services to the Housing Department. Item 14, request for payout of accrued leave. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the city manager's consent calendar. May I have a motion to approve items eight through 14?
Mr. Mayor, I request that number 14 be pulled and tabled. That was my request, and I'm pulling that request.
To discuss, a pull for discussion, yours? Okay, well, uh, okay, just a moment. And you, sir?
I'm just requesting number 14 to be pulled and tabled. That was my request and that was my personal request and I don't want to go forward with that item.
Okay, we'll follow your advice. I mean, is there a consensus to pull?
Yes.
We're, we're, we're addressing 14 first. We're good concurrence to pull? All right? And uh...
So we're voting on eight, nine, 10?
Eight, nine, 10, 11. The motion is for, I make a motion on eight, nine, 10, 11, 13, and, and that's it.
Take it.
Okay, please vote.
The votes are in. The voter reflects mayor and council voting yes.
All right, you want to excuse yourself?
Hello?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to recuse myself from number 12 because I accepted a donation from Verizon.
Okay. Thank you.
I move on 12.
Well, just, yeah, let's just make sure she's on. Go ahead.
I move on 12.
Second, uh, please vote, folks?
The votes are in?
Uh, yeah, now there are.
Voter reflects mayor and council voting yes with council member Katrina Manning abstaining.
Thank you, city council. City, city attorney's consent calendar? City attorney's consent calendar, hello?
City attorney's consent calendar, item 15, claim for bodily injury by Ervin D. Tucker, Jr. Regimen of motion, staff recommends that the city council deny the claim by Ervin D. Tucker, Jr. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the city attorney's consent calendar. May I have a motion to approve item 15?
So move. Second, please vote.
The votes are in. Voter reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Item 17 has been pulled. Elected officials' reports and recommendations.
Is there an item 16?
Yes.
Did I miss it? I am, I, and I didn't do it purposely. Don't, don't start it. Okay. Uh, we have a, the city's, I mean, okay, I looked on the, okay. Uh, item 16, illegal dumping signs request. Uh, councilwoman.
Yes, thank you, mayor. Um, this is something that has been a issue that continues to come up. Um, I would say this weekend I had several calls um, about legal dumping. And I know that we talked about this recently um, in the council and I do believe we talked about um, increasing the fine. But it's still continuing to happen um, way more than it's happened in the last three or four years. And so I'd like to ask the stat, I'm sorry, ask our city manager if there is, um, if you can do a report and then get back to me about what type of signage that we have around the city. Um, and does the city have, with the signs that we have the new fees um, that are on there? And then to check the 311 app to see if there's a particular area that there's the dumping um, that's happening on a consistent basis. Because we need to figure out a way how we can police the areas that we're getting um, a lot of the illegal dumping. And by the way, just wanted to share with you that this weekend, uh, former council member Nilo Mission mentioned that there was um, a lot of illegal dumping where he lives at. And so I did tell him to report it to the 311 app. But again, um, I'm getting texts and calls a lot more frequently about the legal dumping that's going on. And I'm just gonna make an assumption that with all the, the things that are coming um, to the city um, of Inglewood, that we got more people doing um, illegal dumping. And I don't know whether it's folks that are within our city that's coming to, that's dumping or people that's coming from surrounding cities to, to dumping. But there's got to be a way that we can figure out, hopefully through the 311 app, um, where it's happening and then figure out how we can deploy uh, more of our code enforcement to um, go to those areas to make sure that we catch folks that are, that are doing it. So I would like for you to do a report and then maybe get back to me in, in um, I guess, in a two weeks or 30 days.
Okay, noted. We'll uh, collaborate with Public Works Code Enforcement PD to put together a very condensed report on dumping in the city.
Thank you.
No problem. Sounds good. Elected officials' reports, Ms. City Treasurer?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight. Um, I wanted to thank Supervisors Holly Mitchell's office and Assemblymember Tina McKenna's office and our own city council. So thank you for the acknowledgement um, for Ms. Anya Combs over at Semeron Elementary um, for her 26 years of service of teaching at that school. Um, they held that today. So I was over there and represented you all. So I thank you all and, you know, thank you for that. I really appreciated it. Like I said, she taught both my kids and she was a coworker because I worked at Semeron for many years. Um, we had one CD mature this month in June, so it was nice to get away from the 1% interest rate and captured uh, over a 4% interest rate. Uh, Fed is anticipating an 80% rate cut in October. The anticipation for cuts in June has now shifted to October. Uh, as we all know, there are many, many other things going on um, in the world and the economy right now. Um, I wanted to say thank you to Eucalyptus Elementary. I attended their career fair on June 2nd. Um, we had a great time. Katrina Manning was also there. So we did speak to the student body and some of the classrooms. So that was a, a, a great thing to do. Um, just in case, council would like to, they, uh, Eucalyptus has been trying to raise money for their school. So they've been doing popsicle sales every week. Um, I've been dropping off popsicles every week to the school to help them raise money. So um, their popsicle sale will be going on until June 13th. So if anybody would like to stop by and drop off some popsicles, they would appreciate it. Um, let's see, we uh, attended the carpenters' union, 323. They had a grand reopening last week um, to see their new facilities. That was a, a really great event. Um, let's see, um, I don't know if anyone, uh, they didn't mention it, but there is an online uh, detainee locator on the Office of Immigrant Affairs website. I didn't hear anyone mention that, but there is a detainee locator on their website. Um, you know, everything that was said earlier, I naturally concur. Um, thank you to all that spoke and protested peacefully. Um, I've been in the schools this week, so I've seen firsthand. I've heard the fears. I know the fears. Um, but I can only say, you know, I'd like to keep everyone affected in prayer and concur with all the things that were stated earlier. So thank you all for coming tonight.
Thank you, ma'am. The city clerk?
Again, thank everyone for coming out and it was so nice to see so many young people come out to express themselves. I just want to make sure I reiterate that I am a notary and I am uh, by law authorized to help with the signing uh, and maybe even the understanding or uh, of immigration papers. Um, I know that there's a portal where people sign up and I don't know if that makes a difference at all with helping everyone, but you know, if you have any questions about it, please don't hesitate to call our office. If you, you know, have anything to report, please call our office. We want to know what's going on. And you all know that if you need something related to council, you can, I'll send it right over to them. And, and I'm sure that, you know, they're, you know, on alert too because of everything that's going on. So any way that I can be an asset to the community that I was elected to, I want to do that. So anybody with ideas or anything, please don't hesitate to call my office or to come by my office. And as soon as I get those uh, know your rights uh, cards, I'm going to put them right outside in the hall. Thank you all again for coming. Have a blessed day.
Thank you. Uh, councilwoman Manning? Just go like that, mix it up.
Okay. You mixing it up now?
Yeah, just so that everybody gets a chance on council to speak.
Usually, other people go before me. I don't think we should change it. I think we should stay the way it is.
For today, let's just do that, please.
So um, I'mma go ahead and, and talk since the mayor wants me to go. Um, and it's out of order how he normally goes. So um, I had an opportunity to attend Ramona um, pancake breakfast. And during that time, I got a chance to sit down with Betty, who is our resident, who's about, I think she's 101 years old. And she is one of the residents that continue to stay engaged in the community. And it was great to hear her talk about um, Adolf losing her. Um, she talked about a lot of the history um, that I didn't know about um, in the city um, of Hawthorne. And as you can imagine, she knows a lot of information just because she's 101 years old. So that was a real treat for me to be there to, to hear um, that information that she shared. Um, in addition to that, I had an opportunity to host 20 of our juniors from Hawthorne High School, as well as 20 of our losing her juniors. Uh, we went to Verizon Innovation Lab and they had an opportunity to tour the lab, but also we had a panel discussion. And during that panel discussion, they talked about potential careers in technology. And I had an opportunity to learn a lot because when I thought about Verizon, I only think about the storefronts and my cell phone. But when you go deep into the lab, it teaches you um, all sorts of things. And what I really found really interesting was the fact that they use Verizon Communication to operate on people. And you could be in another country and somebody could actually guide you um, through their communication and you can have surgery. So that was like a real treat and interesting. And then the things that we saw in terms of crowd control, traffic control. So I thought that was really a neat thing. It was also something that the kids found very interesting. So that was really a lot of fun. Um, then I also had an opportunity to give out 120 book bags um, to the kids filled with supplies. So that was really, really fun. So initially, when I got there, we asked the kids what they wanted to be when they grew up. All of them said a doctor, lawyer, police officer, firefighter. But by the time that I left, they all said they wanted to be a councilwoman. So, so that right there was so cool. Um, the kids were second graders and fourth graders. And so when I tell you that these kids are so smart and they just soak up knowledge, it was such a blessing to be there um, with those kids. So it was a lot of fun. I also had an opportunity to attend the Democratic Convention that took place in the city of Anaheim. And there I got a chance to meet some of our fellow legislators, um, our assembly person, our congressperson, our supervisors. And there I had an opportunity to talk about some of the things that are going on um, in the city of Hawthorne. But I just had a very pleasant um, time there, just engaging and just learning about how we can make things better in the city of Hawthorne. Um, that is all for me. Oh, I just want to say, I truly, truly appreciate the citywide parking study because with that study, it's so important because even before I became a councilwoman, traffic parking has always been the number one issue that folks continue to talk about in our city. So the fact that we're continuing to address it, um, it's an important thing that our residents know, need. And so I'm so happy that um, this study is being done or was done and that we'll continue to improve the parking in our city. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Uh, councilwoman Johnson?
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming out. Um, I want to thank, uh, give a shout out to our local businesses who participated in tonight's meet and greet. We had iStaffing, who is a premier staffing firm since 2016. They specialize in expert recruiting, direct hires, workplace compliance, payroll, and HR services. They also do safety training. Um, they've been in the cities uh, for the, for about a year, but they've been in business for, uh, since 2016. And when I asked them, you know, what brought you to Hawthorne, they're expanding and they wanted to expand into Hawthorne. So we were excited to have them tonight. We were also excited to have Pizza Show, very, very good food. And uh, for those who don't know, they've been in the city since 1958. They are celebrating their 67th year this year in our city. And uh, they are a family-owned, family-run staple of Italian uh, pizzeria here and they're located at 1334 Hawthorne Boulevard. And we just want to give a shout out to them for their great food that they provided this evening. Um, since our last council meeting, I represented the city of Hawthorne at the Western State Regional Council of Carpenters, our local 323 carpenters' union for their grand opening of their new training facility that they had there. It was a really nice celebration. The place was packed. A lot of, a lot of bigwigs were there. I was like, oh my gosh. Uh, the mayor of Los, former mayor of Los Angeles, Vera Ruggosa, Sheriff Luna. I mean, the, the place was packed with um, people supporting what they bring to our community as far as their apprenticeships and their uh, training programs that they have. So we want to uh, thank our carpenters for what they do in our city. I also represented the city at Laura Richardson swearing-in ceremony and that was beautiful. It was a very beautiful ceremony. Had an opportunity to talk to many state-elected officials and our Congresswoman, um, Maxine Waters. And um, I want to say thank you for the proposed pilot program for parking in an effort to resolve some of our city parking challenges and we have many. So we appreciate that. But I do have one, one challenge and one recommendation that I'd also like to add to that. Um, a lot of times, people will park in our neighborhoods and catch an Uber out of here into Inglewood. I don't know how to capture that data, but that is a problem. And um, while putting in parking meters may help with the business areas, um, that would be great, but it doesn't really help in the residential area of people finding a parking spot and calling Uber and heading out. Um, but if there's some way we can address that, that would be great. Also, if we're going to go to parking meters, are we going to be giving concessions to um, those, our disabled community with disability placards? Is that something?
We're in the early stages of the study, but when we do bring it back for approval, input will be taken from council and direction will be given to the staff. But uh, to my knowledge, anyone with a handicap placard does not pay at a meter. I think, I think that's state law to my knowledge. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, I do want to say thank you to all the young people that came out to express their opinions this evening and to do it peacefully. Um, I would challenge all of them to continue not to just make this a one and done because the laws that a lot of times we don't like, they're already laws and our involvement should have been long before those laws were even passed. So it helps to stay involved, stay connected, know what's going on in your community so that you can make a change before we're faced with things that we don't really like. And that's all.
Thank you. Mayor Protev Montero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, again, good evening, everyone. Uh, thank you for those at home and those who came today. Uh, like I said, it's been like a somber the whole week, whole weekend. Uh, but uh, we believe in law and order. We believe in God and we know uh, United States has been strong. been strong and we will survive, you know. So, it's a matter of who is in the White House, but we just have to go on with our daily lives. People have the right to protest, but like I said, you know, do it peaceful, not destroy property, and we're going to be loud and stand up for all the rights of all human beings, right? Because we want them to be treated with dignity, so not to be treated like criminals, because not everyone is criminal. So, I'm hoping that God will shed a light in all this incident that is going on across the nation. So, that's what I have to say about that. Actually, today we honored the Kiwanis and the Rurie honored the firefighters and the police of the year. So, thank you. One of our officers from the Police Department and the Fire Department received the award, so thank you for being there. Chief, that was excellent selection of the, of the sergeant. I forgot his name. I didn't brought the brochure.
Gonzalo.
Yeah. Gonzalo, yes. Detective Gonzalez, yes, has done tremendous work of detective, you know, putting criminals behind bars. So, thank you for that. That was wonderful. Again, you know, also, I did attend the California Democratic Party in Anaheim. Like Ms. Manning said, you know, we talk about policies and what was going on, what can we do as a California, make sure we continue to bring resources to California and make sure that our economy keep growing because we are, California is the fourth largest economy of the world, so we have to make sure that this thing continue to happen and to make sure that the FIFA World Cup will still come to, to, to USA, and then the, you know, the Olympics. So, I just hope that all these disturbances was not going to cost us economically. Last week, you know, I was not able to attend the scholarships, but I did send six scholarships to six students, three at the Hawthorne High and three at the Hawthorne Math and Science Academy, and congratulations to all of those that graduated that is going to go to college. I appreciate that. Just a quick reminder, now this Saturday, so we're going to have the Juneteenth celebration, and we know that Juneteenth is June 19, but we're doing it on Saturday, June 14, at 11 to 4, right in front of City Hall right here, and that day, you know, is going to be a celebration of three events: Juneteenth, Father's Day, and the American Flag Day. So, for us to be proud of what America is all about. So, so we'll celebrate, you know, those three things. So, make sure that, just come, we have a lot of performers. We're going to have foot trucks, so, jumpers, so right here to celebrate instead of thinking about all what's going on. So, we want to make sure that we be safe also. The parking study, fantastic. Thank you, City Manager and, and the Public Works, because I know we've been talking about parking for decades, so it's time for us to find, you know, a solution. And then, believe it or not, you know, it might not be a complete solution, but at least it's something that we could be proud of because a lot of people, every City Council meeting, come and complain about parking, but definitely it's something that we need to do, and thank you for spearheaded this, this initiative. And I'm pretty sure that you guys know about the Wednesday, June 18. At 12 o'clock, we're going to have like a celebration at the Beach Boys Monument. So, 12 o'clock on June 18. The senior centers are having their Wednesday, June 18. Also, they're going to have a Shoreline Village is a harbor cruise. So, make sure you contact the senior center to the community service. And of course, you're going to have all the flyers, and I'm pretty sure the mayor's going to talk about the movies in the park and the concerts in the park, so I'm not going to talk about that. But just FYI, maybe for the, for the next council meeting, I want to put a discussion item because I officially now received a letter from the Kever Association, the Olympic, Kever, Olympic Association have sent us a letter that I'm going to forward to all of you, and then I want to acknowledge that letter on the next meeting so we can start talking about what we're going to do. And I also get some information that I'm going to contact some other countries, maybe Portugal and maybe Nigeria, to see we can host more than one Olympic team coming 2028. So, for next, for next meeting. And also, Vaughn, if you can remind Catherine, because in the past, we used to give proclamation to those heroes of the year at the Kiwanis, so we used to get them a proclamation from the city. So, if we can maybe do a proclamation and present it to the two gentlemen from the Police Department, Gonzalez, and also for the firefighter, I appreciate that.
Do we have a consensus from council members to do that?
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And that's it for now, and have a good night and be peaceful and sleep well.
Thank you, sir. Yes.
To the chair?
Yes.
I forgot to say Happy Father's Day. It's this weekend, and we won't see you guys, so just wanted to say Happy Father's Day. Enjoy yourselves. Have a great time. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. So, thank you, thank you, everybody, for being here today and expressing yourself. I think today's meeting was a positive one in light of all the things that were happening outside, out there in downtown LA and all over the county. So, I think everybody had a safe space here, was able to express themselves, their feelings, emotional, how, you know, I don't want to say orderly because it could be as, as much as emotional as it needs to be, but we were able to listen to, very carefully to everything everybody was saying. We were able to just see, you know, the, sometimes in a sense, the nuance is an opinion, but, you know, nonetheless, I think everybody's concerned, and it was evident, and the city, I just want to highlight that the city of Hawthorne is here to protect its residents, all of them, all of the residents that live here, okay, in the city. So, it's our obligation, and it's something we want to do, and our police officers and our police department is a partner and essential part of that, our firefighters as well, okay? And just realize, I could ask the chief to do this, but these things happen without our knowing. Our police department does not know when this is going to happen. There's no advance warning about this. So, it's very important to know. I mean, I'm just saying, and is that true, chief? Right? And so, it's the reality of the situation. The federal enforcement just, just do things without anybody knowing, so, and it's shocking, it's to see it, et cetera, and, you know, impactful. But, you know, from our part, we're doing what we're doing. The statement is one thing, but also those resources are going to be on the page. And I asked the city manager as part of the statement, there's going to be a link within the, within the verbiage, correct, Mr. City Manager? A link?
Yes, sir.
To the, to the city's resources so that people could see what, you know, what's available to them. So, very important, you know, we want to make sure that our residents in Hawthorne have a lot of great opportunities. I think we know that our senior center is being refurbished, but they're holding their meetings within one of the rooms. Which room is it, Mr. City Manager?
That would be the Polaris Room located at the Memorial Center.
So, the Polaris Room is right adjacent to where the senior center was and is going to be the new one, but they're having an activity, a harbor cruise on June the 18th, on Wednesday, June the 18th, for about $5. And I'm, I'm assuming that it's been, most of that's covered by the city, but we're just asking for $5 for our seniors just to participate in that. And then, we have the movies in the park, in the park, okay? But I'm saying that purposely because there's something else. July 11, we have Minecraft, the Minecraft movie. I think it looks like Jack Black is in here. It looks like, from what I see in the picture, and Sonic the Hedgehog, Sonic the Hedgehog, Hedgehog? Okay, man, Jesus Christ. I'm off. Hedgehog, Hedgehog, Sonic the Hedgehog, Hog 3, and then Transformer 1. So, it sounds like they're kind of doing what Star Wars did, right? Star Wars 1, 2, 3, and then they go back in time or something like that, right? So, this is probably a fourth one. So, that's on July 25. August, oh, and so this is why I meant, we're going to try, we're going to try our new Movies in the Pool. And that's Movies in the Pool. You could come, Mr. Rob, with your bathing suit and everything, and, you know, splash it around and watch the movie. I challenged you. I challenged you. August the 1st, it's going to be fun. So, we're going to try to make it fun, and if it looks good, if it's a success, and we'll see how it all works out, and then maybe we could. Yeah? Oh!
To the chair?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
I thought we said we wasn't doing any events, and I thought we just talked about this last council meeting. How are we having a new event? I'm just curious. How did that slip in?
It was a directive.
It was a directive from who?
City Council.
It, you got to be more specific because the council voted on the events, and that was not part of what we voted on. So, that is a brand-new event that was not discussed.
Mr. Uh, Mr., Mr. City Manager, is it too late? Can we just go ahead and cancel the event and just refer to this meeting?
I work under the purview of City Council, so if that's the directions given.
Is that something you would like to cancel, Councilmember Manning?
Of course. Don't try to make me be out the bag, girl, for canceling it. I'm just saying that you said that we voted on a specific amount of events, and so this is a new event that we didn't hear about. But of course, I'm not going to be the one to say cancel it. Have fun at Movies in the Pool.
Okay. So, yeah, I think this is for the community. It's something that was in the books from a few months back, a few months back, not just right after, or a week or two before the last event.
It wasn't mentioned.
Okay. It's a city-sponsored event. City of Hawthorne Community Service Department present, presents Movies in the Pool. It's not hosted by an individual. It's not organized by an individual on this council, and it's very distinct from the types of events you have in mind, ma'am. So, let's, let's not, just be very careful, okay? So, what else? I lost my train of thought. So, we have the Movies in the Park, the Movies in the Pool, the Beach Boy Monument Celebration. That's a new event, too. If we want to cancel that one, too, could we cancel that one, too? Or I'm being sarcastic. Just be careful.
That's a tad bit different. That's put on by the Park Foundation.
Well, that's, yeah, so there's a lot of things here that we.
Historical society.
And that's pretty much it. And then I think you have your slate of events for October, September, and December, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So, let's just kind of be careful with that. We just don't want to taint anything. I know people's emotions are sore because of what we talked about last meeting, so let's not put our Community Services Department in the middle of anything that's unnecessary, please. Okay, so, thank you, guys, all for being here. Just be, take a look at our social media and our city websites just to make sure that you get the information that you need with regards to what we talked about today and a lot of other things, okay? So, this meeting is adjourned at 8:01 PM.